All right, this is 515. Everybody that's here is here that's gonna be here, I think. So I think Jane's gonna be joining us via the phone. We called a meeting to order. Jane, what's your roll call?
Rudolph?
Here.
Shaven?
Yeah.
Kroger?
Here.
Lindberg?
Here.
And Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Beelenberg will be absent tonight.
And we've all been given the agenda. There is a change in the agenda on the claims list. Do I need to list that now before we get into it?
Yes.
Um, under list 1283, the amount is going down.
Can we do the agenda first?
Oh, you want to prove it?
Yeah.
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Sorry. Motion by Lindberg, second by Rudolph.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
State of the conflicts along the way. Under the Cassent Agenda, then under A, the minutes of the January 17th, 2023 council meeting and the council work session for the 17th. B, now, under the claims list for 1283, we're going to change that amount to $128,064. That is because the amount for CAS Computers is going down $13126. So their amount would be $2,090.78, making an adjustment in that one. Otherwise, the rest of them are all the same, right?
Yes, yes.
And we got in a list of those other ones that were some of the higher ones, I guess, which we always get every month. Renewal application for the Knights of Columbus, Harlan, Iowa, special Class C retail alcohol license, an eight-month term. Renewal application for the Knights of Columbus, Harlan, Iowa, Class C retail alcohol license, a five-day term. And then renewal application for Dollar General, number 2377, Class B retail alcohol license. Any questions or discussion about any of those?
Negative. I'm from the side.
Is there a motion to approve those?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Shaven, second by Kroger.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then, moving on to the other business. A, ordinance number 2023-01, amending Chapter 6908 of Code Ordinance to the City of Harlan pertaining to parking zones. I think it's the third read of this one. Changes include no parking on Exchange Street on the west side, commencing 200 feet south of Victoria Street, continuing 260 feet south, and no parking on Tarkington Street on the south side from 12th extending 70 feet to the western driveway entrance for 1003 Tarkington Street. And this is the third and final reading on this one. Anything, Jane, in your office, see anybody?
Nope, we haven't heard anything, uh, anything about this.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion, second on that one?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Rudolph.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, then, we have receive and file the Streets, Alley's, and Sidewalks Committee meeting minutes from January 20th, 2023. Everybody have a chance to look those over? Or motion to receive and file those?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Rudolph.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then, under that, coming out of that meeting, um, it's not an ordinance, it's just something that we're talking about, considering drafting an ordinance pertaining to no parking on the east side of 19th Street between Durant Street and Willow Street between the hours of 12:30 and 4:00, Monday through Friday. And I think we've all, Jane gave us all some information. We have had some people reach out to us about this. I think this kind of came from a school, just because there's a lot of congestion there with kids after school, before school, parking down there in those areas. It's a busy street.
I think safety was the biggest concern.
Kids running across the street, people trying to pass, those that are parked, is just, yeah, safety issue.
Yeah, and RJ's not here, but he was part of that meeting, the Streets and Alley's, and we talked about that, that they're the ones that kind of, if you're there, watching, observing, it's a full-time challenge to keep everybody safe because of parking everywhere and kids not really paying attention to, they see mom and dad, or grandpa and grandma, who's picking up, and they run right to the vehicle, and that can be a tough situation. So, I mean, it's something we need to continue some discussion or set a time for a...
You would need to direct staff to draft an ordinance. It would require three readings. So if that's something that the council's interested in, then you would want to direct staff to go ahead and have an ordinance drafted.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yep.
You meant, "Good evening, this is Jane."
Uh, Jane?
Just to follow up with that, Jane had mentioned that heavily safety-driven, brought forth from the school. A parallel or example is on the north side of Ellen Street that was done, oh, six, seven years ago possibly. And if you, on the north side of Elm Street, there's no parking during merril field events to improve the traffic flow and safety and route of the merril field complex. Some of a parallel here in that this is a school safety-driven in a heavily congested area, and the councilperson, Beelenberg, did share a number of visual photos for those who were there at that meeting. I'd see that one of the community comments was, "What about the summer months?" And if you're going to make a recommendation to staff for drafting, we'd want to have some guidance on if wanting to exclude summer months, which I do think is doable.
So is that something you guys think we could go ahead and have them draft something in ordinance that we can start the process?
I think so, and I like to exclude the summer months if it's not too much of a hassle.
During the school year?
So I'll motion on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Kroger.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Okay, we will get that ordinance on the next agenda as soon as it can be prepared by our city attorney, and then we'll have those three readings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up is Resolution Number 2522, setting a time and place for a public hearing date February 21st, 2023, for the purpose of considering the maximum tax dollars for certain levies for the Safe Proposal Fiscal Year 2023/2024 budget.
This is our max property tax levy that the legislative bodies have asked that cities pass in addition to our budget for transparency reasons. It's a little confusing because the levy on the max levy is not the levy that's on our certification page when we certify the budget, because only certain levies are included, not every levy. So it is a little confusing. But, and just as a note, there could be some changes coming. The Department of Management has advised us to continue with our process of our budget proceedings. There might be some changes that are, that will be decided, that we will have to recalculate some of these taxes because there was an error made in a calculation with the, at the state level. And so the rollback was miscalculated. So they're trying to decide right now if they're going to implement the, what the rollback should have been, or leave it at what it's been set. And I believe they're going to change it. So that will affect our taxes, our valuations. It will affect, it won't affect, it won't make these numbers go up. If anything, the numbers will go down. So you can always change your budget to be less than what was certified, but you can never change it to be more without having a due process. So we will wait and see what is voted on. There's a Ways and Means Commission meeting tomorrow at 1 o'clock. We'll find out what comes out of that meeting, but it's a concern for every city. There's been an amendment filed that they would give cities an extra month to get their budget certified because of this. The county auditor would have to start all over with his valuation process, and every auditor in the state of Iowa, every city in the state of Iowa would have to redo their budgets, recalculate all their valuations. They will be given a timeframe to get that done. They'll be given so many days to get them out to the cities, and the cities will then have to go forward. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a deal, but it is what it is. And so Department of Management has recommended that we go ahead and approve our max levy. Some cities have already approved them. Some have already have their budget or their certification scheduled for public hearing already. So some cities are way ahead and some are behind, and we asked, should we continue with this? And they advised yes. So I would like to go ahead and set that public hearing for the 21st at 5:15 to consider that, the max levy. And we'll know more by the 21st, what's been decided at the state level. Anything you have to add to that, Jane?
Most certainly, and if I was feeling a little better and there in person, we could go till about 8 o'clock on this topic, but I'll spare you all that. Are you hearing all right still?
Yes.
Yep.
Property tax system is, go back to 2013, has been a topic of major overhaul. I would offer that not only because of this error, which is a $123 million error by the Department of Management, as well as the convoluted property tax system, we have a less than transparent. And that's concerning for Inimis Valley and especially those that are rural, that don't have the grossly large valuation increases. It creates just a lot of consternation. We'll see where this one plays out. I do see, as you know, on the City Manager Executive Board through the Iowa League, we're meeting this Friday down in Des Moines with our executive director, Alan Kemp, and Robert Palmer, who is the league's attorney, specifically focused on how can we engage the legislators in ongoing collaborative, not one and done, about the property tax system. A lot of concern, I've shared, you know, I encourage you to reach out to the legislators as representing both Senator Schultz, which I've been doing, but we'll, we'll see where this ends up. But it, as I look at those who are elected around the table today, and, you know, a few of us who are in staff positions, it may not impact us in our immediate time, but it's greatly concerning for 15, 20 years into the future. That's all I had on hand.
Well, I think part of this, too, is the timing. They knew about this back in October, but...
November, I believe.
Didn't really announce it until...
Right, until after...
After a lot of budgets, remember, is done, basically, and gone through the process. So that makes it kind of hard. I get it, they're trying to save at the state level, but it sure puts it back on the cities and schools.
Exactly.
And it makes it hard, so...
It's not a minute area.
Comes down to fairness, I guess. I get where it's at, but it doesn't seem real fair, but...
But we should know before the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll know before the public hearing if, I believe we will. Actually, the governor's asked for it to be on our desk by Friday. So, I mean, I think they'll know in the next couple of days.
Because we still have to publish the public hearing.
Right, and I'm going ahead, and I will have to publish that because I have to meet the timeline, publication timelines. And so it would have to be published in Friday's paper to qualify for us to have our public hearing on the 21st. So I'm gonna go ahead and publish that. And like Ted Nelson with the Department of Management said, you know, if your numbers are less, you don't have to, you don't have to go back and change it. It's only when your budget numbers are more, you know, when you're asking more than what the citizens have publicly had a chance to hear out. So anyway, yeah, we, I mean, if we have to do it all over, we have to do it all over. But right now, they're recommending the cities just continue as planned, so...
Sounds like a headache.
So is there a motion on Resolution 2522?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Lindberg.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, a review of contracts and bonds, Resolution 2523, approving the contracts and bonds executed by Old Castle Materials Midwest Company, doing business as Omni Engineering of Omaha, Nebraska, for the construction of the 2023 street improvements in Harlem. We had this at the bids last time, with all those, they were a little bitter. Any discussion or concerns yet with that?
I guess I apologize if I don't have my agenda as or amended one for...
Yes, that was, this one came out.
Oh, yep.
I must have put it wrong.
Yeah, that's okay.
Let's take a look at it here, sorry.
It made a good midnight reading.
Yeah.
This is a formality that, that this, we need to approve this resolution. This was drawn up by our engineers and approved by our city attorney, and it's kind of the, one of the final things we have to do for this street improvement project. It's a process, when you get USDA money, you follow a very specific process, and so we just are following what they...
Recommend.
What they're asking and recommending, yep. Do you have anything to add to that, Jane?
Uh, no, wasn't 100% sure, and I'll be back up on emails and such with the city attorney. I know he has this. We have seen the original contract packet that she had signed off on. I don't believe anything's changed between the original contract packet as well as what...
And...
But it could, yeah, at least I've not heard back from Todd. If you, if that's been done, otherwise I could just, I would offer you maybe make a contempt upon final approval with the city attorney. But I'm always, it looks great.
And we did, Todd did send an email, and I can double-check with him, Jane, but he did say that he did approve this. So, and they got his letter of approval, so, but I can double-check all of that.
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay, yep.
So we still need to, still go ahead and pass this, their motion and...
Yeah.
... board on this tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion on Resolution 2523?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Rudolph.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Jane, are you up to a C administrative report?
Yes, Mayor, three items. With the removal of the lights, the Christmas tree, excuse me, the Christmas light fixtures on Cyclone Avenue, and a few around the downtown, they are well beyond their expected years. They're quite heavy, quite riddle. We've been doing some reviewing of this. I know with the last HMU Board meeting, that it was considered, or was just offered, if it could be a collaborative HMU city project to get these replaced. The ones on Shepherd Avenue and on the south side of downtown were replaced within the last 10 years, are much cleaner, crisper, much easier to handle. We're going to come back to the October, excuse me, February 21st meeting, and we're gonna look at our, Jane and I are gonna look at considerations for how this could be funded. If not, we'll have to wait a year or two. We'll have some actual sample fixtures and estimate of costs. There are 23 fixtures or poles, and these are expensive gadgets, believe it or not. Average based upon the time of year and sales is about $500 a fixture. So quick math says that's about $11,500. If there are any community groups, individuals who may want to participate and help, please contact anyone at City Hall, myself, I'm sure any elected officials would be happy to recommend the City Hall. But we'll come back on the 21st with more information on that. The second item on page 71, I believe it is, of your packet, and Jen, I'm unsure if you're able to pull that up.
The numbers.
There you go. Thank you, Jen. This is the second annual release of, you know, previous year by the numbers. Received a lot of positive feedback from many entities and perspectives last year. This book, you know, there's a number of statistics here, makes it very crisp and clean and clear from, you know, serving the public, as we all do as public servants in the best way and most, you know, in rapidly changing environments. This really crystallizes it, getting prior of the City of Harlan team and the elected official team that helps us in delivering on these services day in and day out. We, similar to last year, we'll be putting this on the social media, it's definitely available to the press, and, you know, if any of our citizens have feedback or questions, please let us know. We, you know, these are all updated, and we actually plugged and played a few additional statistics. One to draw keen attention to, would be one on the right, USDA grants, $768,600 of equipment and projects that we've secured. Huge kudos and hats off to Jane Smith and the superintendents that have identified those, written the, follow the paperwork, the guidelines, and most of all, they've been funded at 35%, which is fantastic. And having updated not only the project, but the equipment that you got more efficiently and safely, that is huge. So feel free to enjoy those by the numbers. And the last item is, some you may have seen and heard, that we lost a dear community member, Dave Miller, this past weekend. Dave was an unparalleled community member, 20-plus years in a civic role in various positions, and so sympathy and prayers to Danita and the Miller family at this time, and truly valued Dave in my time, in elected role and staff role, and he'll be here with us. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Anything for Jane? Well, we appreciate you joining us, Jane. You're winning your time away, and I know you're not feeling good, so that's a double whammy for, so appreciate you hanging in there with us. So get well and come on back whenever you feel better. So, um, I don't really have anything under my report. I would just echo what Jane said about Dave. He, I got on City Council, and Dave had been on a while, and he helped me, you know, he's just one of those kind of guys, he knew a lot about stuff. He knew the manhole covers, he knew the sewer lines, he, he was a wealth of knowledge for people that, you know, that he knew stuff that, you know, he shouldn't have known, but he knew it, and he was always, I wouldn't say he was always right, but he was 99% correct in his, what he would say. And he was never shy about giving us his opinion, and I appreciate about Dave, he was someone, if he had, he was never, nothing was ever set in stone with Dave, he was willing to listen, and there were many times, we had, and he, see, I got on and he was on, and we had a few things that we had to discuss, and he was always open to discussion. And I look forward to, you know, my time coming in here and knowing Dave was gonna be here, and I, you know, I miss him being here, you know, and this community should miss him because he is someone who, behind the scenes, did a lot for our community as a business owner and just a person who gave back. I mean, he's a definition of someone giving back, you know, and never wanting anything in return, so I just, I think about him, he has family, so at this time, so... That's all I have from my chair. Moving on to Todd, Valim, Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce and Industry.
Thank you again. A couple of updates. This morning, at the supervisors' meeting, they passed their hotel motel ordinance, so now that's completed, you know, making that change over to the Chamber of Commerce. And so we'll be issuing letters to our common users of the hotel motel, just kind of reminding them that now those need to be submitted through our office, not through Mark's office, and that, you know, as we move forward, the meetings will be out at our chamber conference room and that type of thing, so... But I'm glad to have that done. The way the current fund will work, Mark will be keeping funds for any project that's been approved up to the last meeting here in January, and he'll still be processing those bills. Everything that will now be approved in April moving forward will go through the Chamber office, so... Reminder that we have our awards banquet coming up on the 17th. This year is gonna be at the Harlan Dolphin Country Club. Doors open at 5:00, and we'll have, at 6:00, and then we'll have the awards ceremony, and then have the auction. So thank you to all the folks who have donated, we've got some really great auction items, really looking forward to the evening, it's gonna be a lot of fun. Reminder that, because this will take place before the next city council meeting, the February Legislative Coffee, which will be on Saturday, February 18th, is being sponsored and hosted by the Farm Bureau. So that particular legislative coffee will be held at their office on Sixth Street versus being out at the Chamber office. And then, last thing, just kind of a shout-out to our, one of our media partners, Cool Gold Radio is now a 2023 Iowa Rock and Roll Hall of Fame inductee, so congratulations to them on that. And that's it for the chamber. Any questions?
Was there an announcement today about a new business coming to Harlan through your office? I saw something, or somebody asked me about it.
There was a post that went up on our page that was incorrect.
Okay.
As soon as, I happened to be at the supervisors' meeting when it went up, so I pulled it down.
I feel a few questions on that, because I hadn't heard, so, Jane, good to know.
I know, a few people that saw it, but before I could get it pulled down.
Did they use your...
No, it was just a mistake by, by our office.
Okay.
Something that got posted, it should have been, so...
Okay.
We'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Todd. Each of you, Joe Rouschemberg.
Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
We had about four items. We talked any glass meeting, we were trying to get a position for staff accountant and cashier. We did end up receiving two applications for staff accountant. One applicant, though, did not possess the education requirements that we require, you know, that we had posted, but we are scheduled then to interview the other applicant, actually, tomorrow. So if that all goes well, and we get something worked out there. Kind of on that same line, we did receive five applications for cashier. Looking at interviews this week, I think we actually had, Jane, you had one or two today, I think, so we're just gonna try to get those through this week, I believe. Last meeting, we did talk about the water plant litigation, that we had already received $550,000 for one of the settlement checks, and we were waiting on the second one. Did receive that check. Did receive that check, I think, just a few days after that, and I believe Elizabeth, didn't we print, yeah, or something?
It'll be in this week.
Oh, it'll be coming up, yeah, we talked to Elizabeth about printing, but basically the second check was for $150,000, so the total settlement for that was $700,000 that we received, so. Last item, we are having a in-person board meeting Thursday instead of our regular electronic, and the reason for that, we're going to go ahead, there was a little delay on our budget, so we made this an in-person meeting just to work with the city, making sure we got the budget received and filed, so that's one of the items besides our consent agenda stuff. And then we're going to go ahead and receive and file our budget, and then, what's the other item, sorry. Oh, yes, we have some repair work to our trench drain in our truck bay in our building. We received a couple quotations on that, and we're going to go ahead and probably prove, prove the low quotation on that at that meeting also to do some repairs, just building maintenance, I guess, what you want to call it, so. That'll also be on Thursday night's agenda. Any questions?
I liked the article in the papers that two weeks ago, laid out the capital projects, and just, I think that was really well laid out for the community and for knowledge of what, you know, scenarios and what's been going on, if people didn't catch on to other meetings or readings, I think it's a good summary to show what's all going on down there.
Well, that would be what, that was just Brandon, right?
Last Friday.
Yeah, last Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 that was, and I think it did a lot of, like you said, good information to, and I'm hoping to get to the point, you know, where I know Gene does go to radio station, you know, I kind of wanted to get a little, kind of get my feet under my, you know, as far as getting familiar with, with position, I think, you know, I'm hopefully going to get to that point too, maybe after our board meetings once a month too, maybe, do the same thing, go on, go to the radio station, try to get some updates, just better communication, I think, everybody knows kind of what's going on.
It's because of the public that kind of, not everybody's going to hear, right?
Right, I mean, I know we filmed both city council and HMU, but, you know, maybe not everybody, not everybody, you know, watches that on our, on our channels, so, so I think it would be a good thing just to keep everybody informed, transparent, I guess, and that's always good, so, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. Any comments from the public?
I appreciate the fire department summary, it's very interesting to read their annual summary in here of all the information and response times, eight times and all, it's kind of puts some perspective, the times of day that they're all, are responding to calls.
Yeah, and they just, they had their banquet, I didn't get to attend, I had to be grandpa that night instead of going to that, but I got a good turnout.
Good turnout.
You went...
Good, it was good.
Yep, that's what I heard, I got a report from a couple of the members, and, did they have one retirement, Tom?
Tom.
Tom?
34, 34 years of service.
Yeah.
Nice presentations, nice plaque, had a great slideshow.
Also firefighter of the year.
Firefighter of the year.
Voted on by the membership, so.
Well deserved.
Yeah.
Yeah, kudos to all those guys, because they don't get thanked enough.
Anybody else? Hearing none, meeting adjourned. Thanks, Gene.